Let me start off by thanking you. I gotta get used to this microphone here. I want to thank all of you for coming out. It looks like we have more people that are trickling in, but I think it makes sense for us to get started. I'm joined today by Marquise Harris-Dawson, who is a member of the Rules Committee, a council committee that I chair in the Los Angeles City Council. We've done something special where it relates to this DWP conversation. What we've done, we've expanded this committee to include Deputy Mayor Romero, who is here representing our mayor, Eric Garcetti. We also have members of the SLANK Alliance with us that are sitting up here as part of this committee, and that's Brett and Joy. And they will be afforded every accommodation that I would give any member of this committee. So I invite you to ask questions or whatever you would like. We decided that as we're discussing something as important as the Department of Water and Power and possible reforms, that we will want to take this conversation to the community. So this is the third neighborhood meeting, neighborhood committee hearing that we have had. This is an official hearing, and it will be part of the city's record. It is being recorded. We have our sergeants here. We have our city clerk. We have our city attorney. So I want you to know that we are, we're coming to you, and we're trying to come to you at a time that is somewhat convenient. So I'm gonna begin this, but before I do that, you know what? What I want to do is hear from the people. So what we're gonna do, anybody that wants to ask a question or make a statement, please do not hesitate to fill out a public comment card. Just don't make any drawings. Because I think I get pissed off. I've been nice for about three days, so. But anyway, if you want to speak, please fill out a public comment card, and I'll call you to speak. You then sit down. If you want to speak again, you fill out another card. It's not gonna be where I give you one minute and then you're done for the evening. You will try to accommodate any and every question that you have. I think the best way to start this off is to just briefly talk about what we've done at the other hearings. The first hearing we had at Downtown City Hall, we had the representatives from the city family that kind of gave us a rundown on a report that they wrote about DWP reform. We then had another meeting in the Valley City Hall, where we had representatives of the Neighborhood Council's DW, the committee that oversees the DWP, and I think that the Neighborhood Council Advocacy Committee were there. On this meeting today, we, I'm pleased that we have representatives from the various business groups from the city of Los Angeles, and they're going to give their thoughts and views, and then we're gonna hear from you. But I want to start this off by asking, I thought I saw Mr. Fuentes earlier, so I'm gonna ask him to make his way down. I'm gonna have him make a statement, but before I do that, I think I'd like to see if I can get Joy or Brett to say a few words. You guys are our host, and we truly appreciate what you've done. So did you want to officially kick this off or say a few words?
Good evening. The South Los Angeles Alliance of Neighborhood Councils is an alliance of 15 South L.A. Neighborhood Councils, and we get together once a month, have meetings about things that are going on in South L.A. that, you know, we share those issues. We have speakers. Stakeholders are invited to come. It's on the third Thursday of every month, and we are really making an effort to make an impact in South L.A. So thank you guys for coming out, and I hope you have a lot of input, because this particular proprietary affects all of us greatly. So, thank you.
No, thank you. Now, I'd like to, I want to go on the record and say that this is collaborative, that Mayor Garcetti has played a very, very important role, and Deputy Mayor Romero has been with us every step of the way at every committee hearing and has been truly engaged. So maybe you could say a few words.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, council members and the South L.A. Alliance Neighborhood Councils for organizing today's meeting. It's good to be here, and we are committed to get feedback from everybody on DWP reform. I am, as the Council President stated, Deputy Mayor on his back-to-basics agenda, and DWP is under my purview. As many of you know, DWP reform is a priority for Mayor Garcetti, and we think there's consensus across the city in the leadership to make some constructive changes in the department so that the department is more efficient and nimble to be a better utility for the residents and the ratepayers of Los Angeles. Four issue, core issues that we think DWP reform must address is streamlining contracting, to make the contracting process more efficient, and to maximize our ratepayers' dollars. We also think that we need to create more flexibility in hiring, get the right people at the right place at all levels of the organization, and also, we would like to see a predictable rate-making process based on the long-term planning and not politics. And to also, we want to strengthen the role of the ratepayer advocate with the goal of increasing transparency and fairness in DWP. So we are here to listen tonight on the topics again, and want to thank the Council President for organizing these public forums with the mayor's office. We will, I'll use this opportunity to hear back and report back to Mayor Garcetti on your comments, concerns, and questions that come up today. So thank you very much.
No, thank you. And now I'd like to ask Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for everyone who's here tonight, especially our Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Fuentes, the business groups that are here, as well as representatives from the Department of Water and Power. I saw some folks who represent our labor partners as well. We're very appreciative of you being here, but I'm especially grateful to the South L.A. Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. It's been the formation of the alliances of Neighborhood Councils that allows a process like this to take place. And I think, you know, something as important as the people's utility, water and power, with water playing such an important role in development and history of Los Angeles, it is just such a luxury that we get to go out and hear from as broad a swath of Angelinos as we've been able to do in this process. And so I want to congratulate and thank our committee chair and president of the L.A. City Council, Herb Wesson, for helping to facilitate this process, and most of all, thank all of you for coming in and digging in, taking the deep dive, and being a part of this city's future.
Thank you. With that said, I'm gonna ask Mr. Felipe Fuentes, who's traveled all the way from Pacoima, Hanson Dam, and to address us. It was Mr. Fuentes's motion that I was proud to second that jump-started this conversation. So without, and I do want to say this, every meeting that we've had, Mr. Fuentes has adjusted his calendar to make sure that he would attend and kind of give his overview as to what his thoughts were when he put this motion together and where he is now. So I want you to know that you've been a terrific asset to this conversation, and if you would address the crowd now, I would appreciate it. And again, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. President, and my colleague, Mr. Harris-Dawson. You'll pardon my back, because I want to talk to the folks that are here tonight. First of all, let me just thank all of you and congratulate you on the leadership that you have on the Los Angeles City Council. I am thrilled to be here tonight, but more so to serve with folks like President Wesson and Mr. Marquise Harris-Dawson. They do a tremendous job for our city, and they equally have taken the same responsibility that I have in this conversation, wanting to make sure that we're connecting with every corner of Los Angeles, trying to understand how it is that we can make this utility more responsive to the ratepayers, to the taxpayer, and obviously, to all of the residents of Los Angeles. So thank you very much for your leadership and your support here tonight. Let me also thank the South Los Angeles Alliance of Neighborhood Councils and all of the residents who are here tonight for their participation. This is a very interesting conversation. It's not one that is very easy necessarily for us to talk about, because it is a historical perspective on the Department of Water and Power that we're trying to address. So it's not as if when I have my community meetings in the northeast San Fernando Valley, it's really easy typically. We know what we need in the district. We need more sidewalks. We need more street humps. We need more public safety. This is a little bit different. We're asking for your input and your perspective on how it is that you think the Department of Water and Power can be more effective and more efficient. And I wanted to just give you a couple of categories that we've been talking about to see if you all agree with what it is that we're talking that should be reformed. The first thing that we think, or some of us think in City Hall, is that we need a stronger governance structure. We need to make sure that we have a board that is responsive and diverse to all of the needs of the city of Los Angeles. It needs to be one that has expertise and has the ability to be as independent as possible in the decision-making when it comes to the utility. And the reason that I say independent is because there's a lot of stresses that are put on the department. And as a result, I think the department gets pulled in very many which ways, and they do a very good job, but I think that they could be more efficient. And I think ultimately, what we need to do is figure out how to limit the City Hall oversight of the utility, not walk away from it. We want to make sure that the utility has lots of oversight, but something that is more helpful. And I'll give you an example on why I want to reform or suggest that we consider it. Today, it takes anywhere between five and nine months for the department to be able to move its work product from the department to the board, to my committee, ultimately to the full City Council, and then back. And that's because the charter and the rules that we've got make it so that we have that kind of oversight. It's not to say that it's not good. It is to say that it's long. And for me, time is money, and money is time. So the more that we figure out how to impanel and entrust more the utility, we'll be in better shape. The other thing that I think that we need to figure out is how to streamline the operations of the utility, whether it's hiring, whether it's the authority that we give the manager, whether it's the responsibilities that we add to the board so that they don't have to go through so much bureaucracy. That's something that I want y'all to consider. And I think, lastly, there's this transfer that happens every single year, and a lot of people, I think, are familiar with it. Some are not. But the transfer is a really significant part of the city of Los Angeles's health and treasury. But equally, it could be a real significant part of the investment, an additional investment that the utility could be making to the infrastructure. So these are just a couple of categories that we're talking about, but as Mr. Wesson said, I think the most important part here is for all of us to have a dialogue, understand what it is that you all are thinking about the utility, both good and bad. But ultimately, I think what it is that we're trying to accomplish isn't just creating new rules for the sake of creating rules. It's trying to figure out how it is that we make this utility more efficient, more responsive, more nimble, because ultimately, there's one thing that makes, I think, the most importance in this conversation of all. If we do all of that, I think we figure out how to save more money. And more money means less increases in the future. The energy and water costs, we know, are just gonna keep going up, but if we figure out how to mitigate those costs, I think we'll be better served, and we'll have what it is that we actually have in a better place, because we own this utility. It belongs to the residents of Los Angeles, so you want to make sure that we get every dollar's worth. So thank you all for coming out here tonight. Thank you very much for the conversation. And again, colleagues, to my Neighborhood Council Deputy Mayor and obviously, my council colleagues, thank you for the important conversation tonight.
No, thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Before we continue, I think that it's appropriate that we recognize Bishop Blake, who has joined us. We want to thank you, Bishop, for allowing us to use this facility, and maybe you can come say a few words before we get started and... Let's give Bishop. You know, we need religious leaders who understand how important it is to teach people how to live on this side of the River Jordan. So we appreciate you very much and for all of the fine works that you've done, not only for this community, but in Africa as well. I'd like to ask a representative from the Central City Association, a man by the name of John Holland, to come up. We're curious as to, you know, what the business community thinks, and we're gonna start off with you. And John, you can speak up here if you'd like. We don't mind you having your backs turned to us if you want to look at the beautiful people that Marquise and I represent, or you can speak from down there.
Do you have a wireless, and I can sort of walk during the old Phil Donahue style? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. I'm John, as you said, I'm John Holland with the Central City Association, and thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this evening. As a way of background, I've worked with DWP in one form or another for about 15 years. First, I ran the Energy, excuse me, the Commerce, Energy and Natural Resources Committee for former Councilmember Ruth Galanter. You know, I advocated for clients with issues before the department, and now I'm with CCA, working with and the department on a number of issues. So I come at this from a variety of different angles. First off, we believe that DWP is a business, and it should be treated as such and allowed to operate as a business. However, instead of trying to maximize profits, its corporate goal and its responsibility is to provide high-quality, reasonably-priced, reliable water and power to the city of Los Angeles. Yes, it is a monopoly, but it is still a business, and it's a very highly-regulated one. No other business I can think of has this type of governance structure as LA DWP does. Its general manager cannot operate like a CEO. Her decision-making ability and her ability to move the organization forward are hampered by a convoluted approval process. Too many decisions need board approval, and far too many of those decisions need council approval and mayoral approval. The CAO and the CLA report from April describes this in very good detail. The reasons for this are very understandable. Over the years, the department and its leadership have done things that have cost it the trust of the voters and the ratepayers of this city, but the result is stasis, and that has created a department that has lurched from crisis to crisis. The motion from Councilmember Fuentes and that this committee has been discussing creates a unique opportunity for many of the problems in the government structure to be resolved. For the record, the Central City Association does not have a formal position as yet on the reform proposals. We can agree that we must now have, what we have now can be improved upon, and the department can be much more nimble. We will discuss the actual proposals when they come from the city and from this body and from the full council. With that said, here are some thoughts, though. What businesses, CCA's members, desire most is the ability to plan for the future. They want predictability. The way the DWP is governed currently makes this difficult. Take rate increases as an example. Most utilities levy small increases fairly consistently over time. LA DWP, usually due to politics, is much more perky-jerky in its rate-making, so there will be no increases because they're politically unpopular. The need for infrastructure spending and maintenance becomes great. Things can no longer be put off, and the major rate increases are proposed somewhere at DWP to pay for this delayed spending. But significant opposition usually comes about because of the size of these increases, and they are reduced, and they don't actually solve a lot of the problems. So many of the problems are just delayed until later. We think and we hope that the department moved away from this with the recent rate increases, which CCA did end up supporting, but we can't be certain. To businesspeople who need to create budgets for the next year and for the next several years, how do they plan when they don't know what their water and power bills will look like in the next year or two, or three or four? That becomes an issue also when businesses are looking to locate here or to expand into the city. If they don't know what their costs are gonna be, but they know that another city or another jurisdiction is gonna have fairly consistent rates and they can plan, they're gonna go where they know what, they have a better idea of what's gonna happen in many instances. We are not advocating for, we're not advocating for taking council oversight out of rate-making. The example of the attempted rate increase earlier in this decade, which we have said is a purely political move, shows why a council check is needed. But allowing the department to implement small increases, if it passed muster with the OPA, may be a way to allow more needed consistency and predictability. And the council can do this through the approval process of strategic planning documents suggested by the CAO and CLA on Tuesday, or it can do this through other processes, and we don't believe that the 245 or Proposition 5 process should be done away with. As for the board makeup, creating an elective board brings in many of the same issues that I described earlier. Candidates with no experience in managing anything can be elected by running against rate increases and with other wild promises. And I think we've seen what happens when people with no experience make wide, crazy promises. Yet a more independent commission, one with experience in utilities and utilities management and with financial or labor relations background, will improve the department. Again, like a business, the department should have a board that oversees its operations like a business. The commission should be more independent. The city staff often serves multiple interests. The CAO and the city attorney both serve the city and the DWP, and their interests are not always in sync. The commission having its own staff and resources is an idea that should be explored more. And the commissioners should be more difficult to remove, but they should also be vetted more thoroughly. And the CAO should still review major documents and projects and initiatives that are going forward. Contracting, as described in multiple reports and testimony, is a problem that is apparent. A thorough review makes sense for major contracts and project awards, but it is time-consuming and cumbersome in other cases. For example, several years ago, I had an IT company for a client. DWP wanted to extend its existing seat license contract by one year with that company. This became a ridiculous task. The extension was sent to the mayor's office for approval. They sent it to the CAO for review. The CAO was understaffed, and since it was not urgent, it went into a stack. I worked to get it reviewed, and it eventually was. Then the city attorney had to review it for form. Then it was back to the mayor, and finally, it was sent to the department, where it went to the commission. Then it was sent to the Energy and Environment Committee, and finally, to the full City Council. By the time that it got to the council, the licenses were set to expire, and this contractor had to create a special condition where they extended at no charge the time when that contract would expire so the DWP could continue its operations. This was for a one-year extension on a three-year contract. This is a multi-billion-dollar business. The GM has a few hundred thousand dollar signing authority, and this is ridiculous. It should be raised to the $5 million level suggested in the CAO reports and in the motion, and the ED4 process should be eliminated. Similarly, hiring is cumbersome. The department needs to allow, be allowed to negotiate changes in hiring and promotion based, other than based on seniority, and it must be able to operate outside its cumbersome city hiring practice for key positions, and in some instances, like other businesses, it needs to be flexible. The GM gave a great example at council on Tuesday about trying to hire new natural gas traders and how she only has mechanical engineers on the list to choose from. So going by seniority makes sense for journeymen. It makes sense for apprentices, but not necessarily for specialized, highly-technical positions, such as the one just described. In short, DWP is a vital business, one the city, its residents, businesses, visitors depend on every minute of every day. It still requires significant oversight and due diligence, but it must be allowed to operate in a way that maximizes the ability to do what it is supposed to do, provide reliable water and power to Los Angeles. CCA looks forward to continuing these discussions and to coming before you again. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holland. I want to ask the city, I mean, I want to say to the city clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you officially read the first item that we're discussing?
Yes, sir. Item number one is a joint city administrative officer and chief legislative analyst's report relative to governance reform of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, as initiated by motion, Fuentes, Wesson, O'Farrell.
Thank you. And I would like to invite Dr. Pickle, if you'd like to come up here with us, and of course, Mr. Fuentes, if you'd like to, I will make room up here for you as well. So with that said, and for those of you that don't know, Dr. Pickle, you sit right there as our ratepayer advocate. Okay, let's call up Ruben Gonzalez for now, who represents the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. Ruben, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers, Madam Deputy Mayor and Bishop, and the illustrious community members joining us today. My name is Ruben Gonzalez. I'm a senior advisor with the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce. Honored to be here. It's always hard to follow John, because he's a lot smarter than me. And much like him, I cut my teeth with Councilwoman Ruth Galanter in dealing with issues of oversight and water and power, and then later on with Controller Laura Chick, who seemed to be auditing the Department of Water and Power pretty much every other day. So a lot of personal experience there as well. I'm gonna try to keep things short, as I would agree with just about everything that John said. Our basic approach is that although the Department of Water and Power is a city asset, and as an asset, it must provide value to the residents of the city of Los Angeles, it is in form and function a business operation. And such, we need to look at its structure in that way. And unfortunately, being tied to city requirements across the board does not allow it to be flexible, nimble, to use the word used before, efficient, and necessarily, cost-effective. So our efforts and our commentary and testimony would be that as we go forward, we need to look at reforming the structure of water and power to allow it, still within a regulatory framework, but to operate much more efficiently as a business were. Touch on a few quick points. Simply, the Board of Directors needs to be recalibrated, not only to have folks there who have the professional experience needed to run a utility of that size, but to have a greater level of independence. They simply need to be able to make decisions, short and long-term, that are based on business needs, to provide the best and most cost-efficient product to the public without political considerations taking such a weight. Right now, it is hard to plan years or decades in advance for things as simple as maintenance of the system when you have decisions made on a short term based on the political need of the moment. So there needs to be a recalibration there. Also, the civil service rules. I'm going to echo what John said. We need to be able to have the flexibility for positions that require certain expertise to be open to get the right person in the right job and at the right time. You simply cannot, again, run this business model that's creating a product for the public in the same way that you do any other government position. Also, contracting and procurement. Once again, it takes way too long, and there are way too many rules and steps in the way for the department to be able to get products and services from outside entities currently. And when you, the more time you take, the more it costs. The more it costs, the more to the bottom line. That's more to the ratepayers. That's more inefficiency. So we need to look at reforming the contracting procurement policies of the department. And finally, we would offer that the revenue transfer format needs to be looked at once again. We believe the transfer, it is right for the department to transfer funds to the city. There are costs that the city takes on. This is an asset. For all intents and purposes, the residents of Los Angeles are stockholders in the department, so they deserve a return to the General Fund for Services. But it should not be coupled to revenue. It should not be based on... It should not be based on what's coming in in rates. We need to establish an amount that does not fluctuate based on revenue resources. And that's better long-term for the city, for the city's budgeting process, and for the department itself. And with that, I will close out my comments, and we are happy to continue to be partners in this process and move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if Ruben, you could hang around you and John for a bit. There may be a question or two I just want to get through, as many of you as I can. We're joined by Bill Funderburke, who's a DWP commissioner. Bill, Mr. Funderburke, commissioner, why don't you come up here? We do have a seat for you. And any difficult questions that they ask, I want to direct them to you. So why don't you come up here and sit next to Deputy Mayor Romero? With that said, I'd like to call on the president, representative from the Crenshaw Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Armin Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Distinguished board, members of the public, business owners, Bishop, my name is Armin Ross, and I'm the president of the Crenshaw Chamber of Commerce. And like these previous two gentlemen, I did cut my teeth in the city government. I was an assistant chief of staff with Councilman Nate Holden, and also a director and deputy mayor for Mayor Jim Hahn. I handled his homeless services where I met the good general right here. My chamber is smaller than both of these two organizations, so I'll be a little briefer with my comments. I was going to steal a little bit of John's notes there, but he went right through them. Let me say that water and power rates, especially the power rates, have a tremendous effect on small businesses. It can cut right into the profits that you project for yourself, especially when most landlords are looking for three, five, 10-year lease agreements that have built-in increases in them. And small businesses, as you know, are bearing the brunt of the economic recession today. So our profits are not going up as high as some of these water and power rates, especially that we're seeing today. So we would like to see some kind of way to keep a steady line on the power rates, maybe some way to fund infrastructure improvements, similar to how we're funding our transportation improvements through the half-cent sales tax. I know it's something that was attempted before, but maybe it's something that could be looked at again as a way to correct an infrastructure that, for some reason, has been allowed to deteriorate over the years, even though our rates have been increasing. As far as governance of the DWP, I think we need to find some reasonable way to have an independent commission. But also, I like the city having some final oversight. I like the council having some final oversight over the commission. And whether they are elected or appointed, as they are right now, I don't think it makes that much difference. You don't always need to have the super professional in there to make a decision. You need people with common sense in a lot of cases. Your expertise as council members and as commissioners comes through common sense in a lot of respects. So that's what we're looking for. If a rate payer advocate remains a part of the structure, we'd like to see a rate payer advocate with a little, with some teeth in what he or she brings to the table as far as the commission is concerned.
We'd like the one we got.
You like him? Okay, okay, okay. We'll keep him on there. We'd also like to see some way to eliminate some of the waste that we see going on as far as infrastructure improvements are concerned. We hate to see streets completely repaved and redone, and then a few weeks later, DWP is digging a hole in it. So some kind of way to maybe better coordinate the delivery of city services and repairs so that, you know, we're not going back and redoing streets on some occasions that took years and years and years to repave. So with that, with the move towards more electric cars and electric appliances in homes, which means that there's going to be a greater use of electricity in our lives to come, we like to see DWP come up with some kind of way to keep those electric rates down. We don't want to see a constant increase in those rates, which is what we see. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And with that, Mr. Chairman, Councilman, our small chamber is giving this little small input for this very, very large topic. Thank you very much.
What do you think about monthly bills?
Monthly is okay. You know, I'd rather pay it monthly than every other month. You know, it doesn't matter. I think a monthly bill is, monthly bill is fine. If I could keep my bill at, well, my bill is high. It's like $600, you know, for two months. But if I could keep it at the same rate for the next five years, that would be great. And also, DWP may need to go and kind of recalibrate and rekind of look at the sewer service charge, you know. They're charging me more on that end than the water that I use. So maybe they need to look at some things again.
Okay.
Okay. But monthly would be great?
No, but I appreciate, appreciate you. So now, all the way from the Valley, from the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, we have Mr. Stuart Waldman. Stuart, please come forward.
Thank you for having me. It was an enjoyable drive out here. Breeze through, no traffic, found parking outside real easy. But I'm glad I'm here. That part is true. So, good evening. As the council president said, I'm Stuart Waldman, president of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. We are the business organization for the San Fernando Valley. We have over 400 members, and I make it a point to meet with every one of my members once a year, face-to-face, have a conversation with them. And they complain about a lot of things, and a lot of different things, but they are always complaining about DWP. The rates, problems getting things done, just having the ability to have someone work on a project if they're expanding. We had Goodwill, who's a member, who missed their grand opening date because DWP couldn't get someone out, and they had over two months before they, to be able to get someone out to get their electricity on. This was a couple of years ago, but hopefully, those things will change. We support the efforts to reform the governance of the DWP, and we have welcomed the opportunity over the last few months to work with our partners in the business community, Councilmember Fuentes's office, and the mayor's office, as well as other council members. Thoughtful reform will allow the utility to operate more efficiently while ensuring accountability to the rate payers. One of the most important steps will be to review the procurement and contracting processes and decision-making with the intention of making this process less burdensome and costly. A full-time, professional board of commissioners is excessive, and a strong management team should be able to fulfill this function. We do feel that it is important that the city council has some way to review the ratemaking process. In terms of the board, we support having five to seven part-time appointed commissioners with an appropriate per diem. VICA supports reviewing personnel rules, the DWP's hiring process. And when you look at any corporation, and make no mistake, DWP is a corporation, the ability to hire the best and the brightest, no matter where they come from, matters, and it makes a difference in the ability to run an organization well. Council members, you can hire anybody you want from anywhere. Unfortunately, DWP doesn't have that ability, as was mentioned earlier. Finally, VICA supports the idea of a cap on the transfer rate. But we would need a mechanism for the cap to be increased if circumstances demand. We look forward to continuing the conversation over the next few months. A robust governance structure for DWP is vital to Los Angeles's economy. Thank you so much, and I'm glad to be here, and I'll stick around.
Thanks, Stuart. And now, the cleanup hitter, Adam, are you here? From Adam Lane, from the Los Angeles Business Council. Adam, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Council President, Councilmembers Fuentes and Marquise Harris-Dawson, and Deputy Mayor Romero, and our members from the South LA Alliance Neighborhood Councils. Firstly, I'd like to thank this committee for inviting the LABC here tonight and allowing the business community to share our priorities for DWP reform. For those in the room who don't know, the Los Angeles Business Council, we're a research and advocacy organization with over 400 members. We work in the areas of energy, environment, housing, and workforce development. We have an extensive working relationship with DWP on issues such as energy efficiency, the successful rollout and implementation of local solar programs, such as the feed and tariff, and we have an ongoing partnership to promote LA DWP's California-friendly landscaping program. For us, DWP reforms not to diminish the great work of the team, but rather to give them the tools and provide them with the ability to continue the great progress they've made under the current board leadership and General Manager Edwards. The city and state have established some of the most aggressive and forward-thinking energy and environmental goals. We have to achieve a statewide 50% renewable energy portfolio by 2030. We have to double the state's overall energy efficiency in the same timeframe. LA DWP has set a voluntary 15% energy efficiency target by 2020, and we have to achieve the mayor's sustainable city plan goal, 400 megawatts of local solar installed by 2017. LA DWP has a long way to go to increase water conservation as well and source a greater portion of our water locally to make LA more resilient to future drought. And at the same time, the utility is undergoing a transformation to update its infrastructure and to modernize the utility and bring it to the 21st century. We're asking the utility to do a lot. Los Angeles is at the epicenter of clean technology. There are a lot of innovative companies in the region that are developing technologies that can address some of the challenges our utility faces, and that will make us competitive. We'd like to ensure that those companies have access to potential partnerships with LA DWP as needed. We hope that smart reform can go a long way to make it easier for companies to do business with the utility. I want to briefly highlight some of the points LABC views as priorities. Those are improving efficiency and reducing red tape and uncertainty over LA DWP's contracting procurement and LA DWP's hiring challenges. When businesses look to contract with DWP, they currently deal with lengthy periods of time to complete and interconnect projects compared to other utilities, which add cost to businesses. We reiterate the support for increasing General Manager's authority to contract to $5 million in up to five years. Additionally, we know that many firms face uncertainty when participating in DWP programs and contracts due to delays and redundancy in the system. This has several negative effects. First, as aforementioned, time is money. The longer it takes to see a contract to fruition, the higher the cost may rise. Second, the fear from firms and investors that a program approved by the DWP Commission may be derailed will disincentivize further investment in Los Angeles. We heard in city council Tuesday, recommendations to provide DWP with more authority by allowing them the ability to make contract amendment without requiring council action, and amending the city charter to eliminate the ordinance requirement for power contracts, while maintaining the city council's ability to review policies pursuant to LA Charter, Section 245. We're still in the process of reviewing these specific recommendations, but we do think they are very interesting and something we should have a discussion about. City council and mayoral leadership is absolutely needed to set the policy and review the budget that drives our utility's programs. However, we believe implementation should rest in the hands of the LA DWP board because it will streamline contracts and procurement. We also want to highlight the current hiring challenges. In the next five years, nearly 50% of middle and upper management positions will be eligible for retirement. This is a challenge that utilities are facing nationwide. LA DWP faces steep competition for recruiting top talent as more technology companies move into Los Angeles. We've seen several examples in our work where the utility has been slow to implement key programs and provide good quality customer service, in part because of difficult hiring. And most concerning, we've seen DWP move top talent to work on crisis situations due to capacity issues. There have been several alternatives on the table for improving the process for hiring, and we're supportive of the proposals that give DWP greater control over hiring decisions by increasing the number of exempt positions. We do not think civil service will be rid of, but we do think it's a good idea to address some of the challenges with the current system during the next contract negotiation. We believe these several key recommendations and areas for discussion will be crucial to creating a more effective and efficient utility, and that will provide the utility with more autonomy to carry out the mandates set by city council, the mayor, and state government, ultimately driving down the cost for rate payers and attracting top talent and businesses to Los Angeles. Thank you for having us tonight.
Now, thank you. So do we have any questions for any of our business people before I jump in? What I'd like to know is, I'd like to get a few more specifics where it relates to your views on the transfer, just if you could expand on your thoughts. In fact, Stuart, I don't know if it was you or Ruben that talked about the cap, but I, in fact, it was you, Stuart. Why don't you come back, if you would? So since I have you, I want to ask you a couple of questions. I do want to get a little more out of you where it relates to the transfer. When you talk about capping or what have you, what are your thoughts?
Sure. So we put together a task force of our members, and they met and spoke a couple times. And first, let me say, what was interesting to me was I fully expected my people to say no transfer at all, that that money should just be reinvested in DWP. And they, every single one of them, supported a transfer. They believed that that was an appropriate thing to do, that giving money to the city was appropriate. But they did have concerns that, of the amount of money, that it continues to grow. And as you know, previous city councils have used the transfer to help balance the budget in times when we've had, during the recession, and there's concerns there that should we hit another economic impasse, which I think a lot of people expect will come, that the council might consider increasing the amount of money that DWP gives. That was the concern.
You mentioned per diem for the commissioners, a fair per diem. What does that mean?
Well, so, one of the things about the part-time commissions that you have is a lot of people have to take a considerable amount of time off of work. They didn't want someone to essentially give up working and become a bureaucrat, so to speak, and only do that as their job. They wanted people with real-world experience, but who would be willing to take the time to give up one day a week or however long it takes for that? So they thought that a fair, I guess a larger per diem.
That's fair. I just want to hear.
Would incentivize people who might have to, you know, leave their office for a half day or something, because it's hard for a small businessperson, and especially one who has a very small office and does a lot. You know, people on, in big businesses, it's not as difficult for them to take time away because there are people to cover for them. But on the small businesses, you're losing a lot of really good talent who could make a difference.
Thank you. I wanted to get Mr. Ross, I wanted to ask you, you can piggyback on that if you want, but I was curious, you may have heard a couple of the speakers have indicated the need for a more professional, experienced board. Now, I'm not against that, but what you said made a lot of sense to me, where it relates to individuals that have different skill sets. So if you could expand on, you know, because what I wouldn't want to do is restrict this board to just individuals that have DWP experiences. One of the greatest leaders of our time was, I think, Lee Iacocca, and I think before he took over Chrysler, I can't say that he had automobile experience, but he had leadership experience, and he was able to transfer that. So what were you thinking about when you made this statement about the types of commissioners that we should look for?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was thinking exactly what you just stated at the end of your com- Well, Mr. Chairman, I was thinking exactly what you just stated at the end of your comments there, that you don't need to have a professional who's come up through the ranks of DWP. You don't need a professional who's come up through the ranks of LA Unified in order to run a school system. It's happened before with others who were not from the school system. So you don't need to have that from DWP. Now, you do need to have people who may have some technical knowledge of power and water systems, but when an individual gets elected to an office coming from a legal, educational, community organizing background, and now they're placed on a Public Utilities Commission, Public Utilities Committee, they learn by the information that is being presented to them that they synthesize to make a good decision. So I believe that commissioners can act in that same, in that same way. So you don't need to have all professionals coming to that commission. I think it needs to be people who are professionals and coming from a variety of disciplines so that they can make those common sense decisions that I mentioned before. As far as the transfer of money, I think it needs to continue. I think the city should receive more money. That money is profits generated from the high, I shouldn't say high, but from the, from the high water bills that we pay every month. So that money needs to go to the city, and I don't care if they balance the budget with it, I don't care what they do, but as long as it gets back to the people in some way, shape, or form. And by coming from the city, everybody benefits from those dollars. So I think the transfer should definitely stay.
Yeah, I want to ask panelist Brett to...
Brett, okay.
He wants to jump in right now, so the floor is yours.
Mr. Ross, my good friend, knows that I can disagree with him respectfully, but...
Absolutely.
So the DWP, we think of it as this entity separate from the city, but if the money stayed with DWP for infrastructure, whatever it is, is that not still staying with the city?
You know, that money is staying with the city now. Their profits are tremendous. They are able to make infrastructure improvements with the dollars that they have and still transfer money to the city where everybody gets to benefit from it. When they invest in either solar power, green power, I don't think they're investing in other power sources, but whatever the power sources that they're investing in, they're doing that with dollars that they're making right now, and they still have money to transfer to the city, and we all benefit.
Okay, if I could get Ruben, I'd like for you to weigh in on the transfer, and if there were a cap, how would you cap it? And right now, Commissioner Fundaberg, we have five commissioners right now. Are you supportive of keeping the number at five? Do you believe in expanding it so we get a more diverse representation? So I'd like to have you give your perspective to this committee.
Well, there are three words I'm never afraid to say, and they're "I don't know." There's no certainty in this. I mean, we're still looking at wrestling with it. Obviously, we're going to look more specific offerings or ideas that come from the city. We just look at two basic items. We think it generally sends a bad message when your transfer is set as a percentage of revenue. It's almost a benefit to the city that might be better spent on the needs of the infrastructure for the utility. And we heard that a lot from our members as we were going through the last rate case. What they constantly said was, "They're asking us for more money. They're asking us to increase our rates because they say we need to have better maintenance of the infrastructure, and yet we know that X percent is going to be going into the city's coffers instead of going to that infrastructure where it needs to be."
Let me jump in. So let's just say, right now, we get 200 million bucks. Let's say, right now, we get 200 million bucks. 10 years from now, 200 million bucks won't be worth 200 million bucks.
Well, I think you would start, I mean, as I recall from my years working in the city, the baseline rationale for a transfer from Department of Water and Power of the city was that there are certain services that the city provides to the department, and those have an actual cost. And so that's supposed to cover that. And then the second one, which is what, you know, my old boss, Councilwoman Galanter, used to say, is that, again, the city residents are stakeholders, basically stockholders in the DWP, and something beyond that is reasonable for them as a dividend because it's paying for public services. Now, to come up with the correct quantitative method to figure out what is the cost of service provided to DWP by the general fund departments, get that number, and then agree to something on top of that, and that's, we would argue, a better rationale going forward, as opposed to being tucked to, one, to revenue for the message sense, but two, when you apply it to revenue, then it's a volatile number, as opposed to a number that you can see, that you can count on, that you can budget against, that you know is going to be coming. So that would be our general approach. Again, as I said in the beginning, don't have all the answers. I don't know, there may be a better mousetrap in this. As far as the commission, you know, again, our principle is try to make it as independent as possible. What we see generally is because it is so tied to the political process of the city, decisions are being made that aren't first and foremost about providing a cost-efficient, effective power and water services to the public. That has to be bottom line, all that the utility is doing. But over time, it gets balled up in social goals that our elected leaders or appointed leaders have. It gets balled into, you know, even though we need to build out our infrastructure, raising rates gets kicked down the road over and over again. There needs, you know, if you look at private utilities and other public utilities throughout the state, they are still in a regulatory framework. They still have oversight. They still have to meet public requirements, you know, when you're acting as a monopoly. But it's less direct every day, every second, policy, and I use this word lighter than it sounds, interference in meeting that, what should be that number-one goal. You know, if Department of Water and Power were free to do procurement, to bring in expertise from the outside in services, to hire people in a way that they could provide things most efficiently, that benefits the bottom line, that benefits the ratepayer, that benefits the system. Often, they can't do that because of the requirements that come from the city being so involved in the rules that are structured in it and the policy goals that are pressed into service by, either on the water and power platform or to take advantage of the resources that Water and Power has, as we're always finding less and less resources in the general fund budget. So that's why, that's why we'd argue the structure of the commission should be more independent, so they can, you know, whether it be staggered tours, whether it be how they're appointed, whether it be how many there are, so that they can feel free to make decisions based more independently, still with oversight, but not the, kind of the day-to-day engagement.
Mr. Harris-Dawson has a question.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. This question, I think, is for you, Ruben, or you, Mr. Howland. So I struggle to get my head around this concept a little bit, the idea that we should treat something that is a business, but that has a regulatory framework of a public-sector entity, right? So it will never have, or at least in the foreseeable future, it will not have the set of rules that a business has. So that's tricky for me. But in that frame, trying to understand it better, so you just said, you know, the council comes in and imposes social goals on what should be a business enterprise, and I wanted to get, and that makes sense, like I get, it makes sense that that would happen. Do you have an example of where that's happened historically and it's actually impeded the productivity, efficiency, or profitability of the utility?
See if I can...
Jump right in.
I think there are a lot of folks who would make the argument that, you know, over many administrations and many different councils, we have weighed in with things like renewable portfolio standards. Not a bad goal, but when you say, "We're going to be at X amount at this time and this year," and it doesn't take into the impact that, well, let's see, DWP is fully invested in a coal plant here, or a nuclear plant here, or a, you know, and it is of value to move in the direction of greater renewable energy, but there's also a value to the ratepayers to have a diversified portfolio of energy being provided, not only to make sure that service is cost-effective, that the rates aren't going up as much as they can, as much as they may, but also that just continuity of service is protected because you have a diversified background. But what happens is, when the policy is to get away from fossil fuels or older forms of energy, that becomes, the balance is no longer about the most cost-effective way to do it, it's about meeting that goal, which may add significant amount of cost. Or if you look at solar energy in the city, there were ways potentially to provide greater access to solar in the city of Los Angeles, but frankly, the labor rules involved in how it was actually put into place made it potentially less effective in getting actual solar out to folks, because only certain people in certain, in certain workgroups and certain unions were allowed to do that, as opposed to taking advantage of outside services and resources. Again, not saying philosophically where you should land or not land, but again, it adds a cost when you put limitations. Those limitations aren't about providing the lowest-cost best service, they're about meeting policy and political goals first and then getting the service through them. So it does impact.
Okay, now, before, if I can get John a hold on and Adam for a minute, thank you, Ruben, and Dr. Pickle and Commissioner Fundaberg don't hesitate to jump in. In fact, I'll probably ask Dr. Pickle for you to jump in, but I want to quickly get to some of the general public comment. So I want to let you go, Dr. Pickle, and then I'm going to start general public comment. Then we'll have other questions for our business representatives and for maybe some of the people seated around this table.
First, a couple facts to add to Ruben Gonzalez's comments. The DWP pays between 50 and 65 million per year to the city for services. That includes paying for the Office of Public Accountability, but we're only a small fraction of that. The transfer is separate from that. So just for factual understanding on that.
I appreciate that.
Now, the committee asked for the OPA's comments on a couple areas.
I did.
Would you like me to go through this now?
Yes, I would.
Three areas we sent you comments on. One is improvements in the OPA, to strengthen the OPA, and there are really two areas. Some improvements in resources. We have a minimum budget that's specified by charter. As we're taking on additional duties, there are two aspects of adding staff. One is, we think our, to support permanent staff, we think our minimum budget should be roughly doubled to, actually, the level at which we're spending right now. And second, to allow flexibility for new appointees in the Office of Ratepayer Advocate to have the staff, like the Ethics Commission, like the city attorney, to be fully exempt. Second area is access to books and records as part of access to information. We think that this can be done as ordinance, just clarifying the existing charter standard of access to information necessary to do our job, which is the charter standard. The other areas were on contracting, and we make comparisons to both investor-owned utilities, which are highly regulated and subject to policy limits, on renewables like DWP, and in fact, the investor-owned utilities were subject to those limits before the publicly-owned utilities were. And also, we looked at public utilities. We did not a scientific survey, not an extensive survey, but a look at the authority-granted CEOs in investor-owned utilities. Talking to people in the business, we said, gee, what's a level of 15 million like? And the response is, that's low. As part of the IEA, they did a survey of public entities, and the public entities, Sacramento Municipal Utility District, which is about a third the size of DWP, has a level of 5 million for the GM. So in discussing this with CLA and others, they go, well, gee, that's pretty high for this city, and if we give it to DWP, we'll have to give it to everybody else. Our response is, these are the numbers that fit this business. So we suggested a level up to 5 million that can be adjusted according to an action by the DWP Board and approved by council. So if circumstances change, this can be changed. Second...
Let me ask you. The suggestion, I mean, right now, the contract authority of the general manager is what, 125,000?
150,000.
150,000. So the preliminary recommendation is that that be increased to approximately 5 million in five years?
But wait, there's a little more. For certain specific expenditures within a budget, we suggest a level of 10 million. And for things where there's been a competitive bid process, and there are five or more bidders, we would suggest up to 15 million. And then this whole process to recognize...
And let me ask you, let me jump in on that, because would that be with commission approval? It might be easier for, might be easier for members of the council, and it would still be nimble if you had a cap with the general manager but afforded the commission the ability to act and increase that up to a level.
CLA, CAO, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, there is no dollar cap on the board, but there's a time limit cap of three years. Is that correct?
But imagine if we gave them the authority to go as high, let's just say, 15 million, and it did not have to come back to the council.
If the contract is for less than three years, they have that authority now, but this would be authority granted to the general manager, but this is a delegated authority that can be corrected or has to be approved periodically by the DWP Board and with the agreement of the council.
Okay.
So if you had, on the change of a CEO, or excuse me, a general manager, or an interim general manager, you might change those limits during the period of time you have an interim general manager.
Okay, now, that makes sense. I cut you off, I'm sorry.
The last item is, we believe regular rate reviews are needed. Now, in the utility...
What does regular mean? Define regular.
Well, I can give you an example. It's tough to forecast in this business beyond three years. Sometimes tough to forecast beyond three months. For example, we just completed the rate cycle, and we had budgets set for the next fiscal year. DWP, in reviewing choices between contracting and building staff, wanted to increase the labor budget by about 10% so they can implement faster. The total rate level is staying low because they're saving on contracting, but that just illustrates in the simplest way the difficulties of forecasting this business. Now, how long is, what's the right cycle so that they get the consistency in rates, like the business associations we're talking? We suggest something, at least three years, possibly four years. If it's four years, there should be an interim review at a two-year point. So either a three-year cycle or a four-year cycle with an interim review after two.
Okay. All right. Let me jump to some of the cards right now. So do we have Kent from the Sierra Club? Are you still here? Stella, Green Education. Teresa, I saw her earlier. Teresa, oh, there she is, Sanchez. You guys, come on. We're going to start... We're going to start off with, like I said, one minute per speaker, and if they want to speak again, they just fill out a card, and I give them another minute to speak. Yes, sir?
Okay, yes, hi, I'm Kent Minot. Thanks for the opportunity. I volunteer with the Sierra Club, and I'm an adult education teacher. I'm very happy this committee's taking up the important question of how we can make our utility function for the future of Los Angeles. The urgency of our need to move toward clean energy means bringing energy efficiency and solar to every household in LA. We need our utility to have the capacity to get us there. Now, right now, the hiring and contracting process is too cumbersome. It's impacting our ability to meet our goals around energy efficiency and renewables, and the utility's ability to meet state mandates, as Adam Lane from LABC pointed out in detail. It's also made the utility appear insufficiently responsive to the communities it serves. Fixing this program will not only improve service, it will also create jobs, union jobs. And we already have an effective job training program in place that can help the DWP meet some, meet some of its workforce challenges. It's called the Utility Pre-Craft Training Program, and it prepares workers for jobs in the utility, and puts them to work doing energy efficiency upgrades in low-income parts of the city.
Wrap it up, Kent.
Okay.
But you know what? We hope to have a meeting next Friday at 8:30 in the morning, correct? And I'm going to be inviting representatives from the environmental community to come, so I can get an environmental perspective. So again, if you have more that you'd like to add to your statement, just fill out another card.
Okay, we'll do, thanks.
Okay, thanks for coming, man. Stella, followed by Teresa, followed by Brenna Norton. Yes?
Thank you, President Wesson and the Reform Committee. My name's Stella Suwa, the Executive Director of Green Education, a small nonprofit located in Wilmington. And I'm here today because I too believe that the community would benefit from reforms to our public utility. I'm proud to be one of the Repower LA nonprofit partners that, for the past four years, has worked consistently in CD-15, from San Pedro to Watts, to connect small businesses to DWP's Commercial Direct Install Energy Efficiency Program. This free program has helped thousands of businesses save money on their water and electric bills. And the workmanship has been top-notch, our businesses happy with the program. Again, provided valuable training and job opportunities within our underserved pollution burden communities. Because of a slow hiring process, though, our customers have sometimes had to wait months for their upgrades. This can be frustrating for them, and it impacts their perception of the program, the utility, and the city as well. A more efficient hiring process would allow DWP to more quickly dispatch workers to the community, reinforce our commitment to energy efficiency, clean energy, and environmental health. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I can get Ms. Sanchez?
Good evening, committee members. My name is Teresa Sanchez, and I'm with AFSCME District Council 36, and the Coalition of Los Angeles City Unions. And I'm also a 10th District resident. So I just wanted to.
Somebody get her some tea, or water, or whatever.
And I'm, I'm really thrilled to be able to have the opportunity to report to the committee, and to all of the participants here in the room, that the Coalition, collective bargaining agreement with the city that's just been adopted, is going to create an opportunity to reform civil service, and make it more efficient, more nimble, and effective, and streamlining it, by being able to create, or fill, 5,000 city jobs in the next three years through a program of targeted local hire, in South LA, and in every community in the city where we have high poverty, high unemployment, and where many of our community members have traditionally faced barriers to civil service employment. And so, we believe that civil service is a benefit to the community, because it creates transparent, effective, and honest service to the public.
Thank you. So if I could get Ms. Norton, and Stephanie Vega, and after Stephanie, I want to go to Adam, and I think it's John. Yes?
Good evening, committee members. My name is Brenna Norton, Senior Organizer in Los Angeles with Food and Water Watch. Speaking on behalf of our members, also a member of the Fix LA Coalition, and we submitted a letter with the Water Committee of the Sierra Club Chapter and Amigos de los Rios. We urge you to oppose the motion from Councilmember Fuentes, specific to the tenants that would undermine democratic governance and public oversight over DWP. These tenants would make DWP less accountable, and would undermine specific efforts to improve the ways DWP sources and provides new water and power. The proposed motion and additional proposals after would remove city council oversight of rate increases, contracts, and bulk water sales. By removing democratic control over DWP, it would facilitate the abuse of DW customers via unjustified rate hikes, outsourcing, and potentially move toward privatization models. This could also further entrench policies that must be reformed. We need to be moving away from the dangerous dependence upon imported natural gas and imported water, and this comes at great expense to DWP customers and the environment. I have more comments, but I look forward to next weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vega, welcome.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. My name is Stephanie Vega. I'm a single mother of two. I am privileged to be part of an excellent training program with the Department of Water and Power. I'm a UPCT, also Utility Pre-Craft Trainee, partnership with IBW, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 18. This program is great for anyone, everyone, anybody. It has been a great opportunity for me and my family. This program is also preparing people like me, that came from the community, with careers with the utility, where there's a huge number of people retiring within five years. It would also help those of us in the training program to get full-time positions with different exposures of the various trades. Currently, if I may tell everyone, I'm working at the still shop. I put my boots on every day, I wear my safety goggles, my hard hat, doesn't look like I work for it, but, and I do my tailgates, I do a bunch of man stuff, but I'm really proud of what I do.
Thank you. Okay, if I could get Adam, and then John, come on up, because I do want to hear your thoughts on the transfer. If you would cap it, how would you do it? John?
Excuse me, the, the transfer, I would have to agree with what Ruben said. I've always viewed it as a dividend to the stakeholders in the city of Los Angeles. It does make sense to have some sort of a percentage, perhaps with a cap on that, so that it doesn't grow too much. There are a lot of smart people who are very good with numbers, much better than I, to, to, who could determine that. I would like to address Mr. Harris Dawson's earlier question about seeing this as a business. And I would say that, in its own way, DWP is no different than Southern California Edison, in that it provides, it is a business that provides a product, a very necessary product. The difference is that, so Cal Edison does have a profit, it does have actual shareholders, and is governed by the PUC, for all the problems with the PUC, but it does provide a, a necessary product. DWP does provide a product for, for a fee. And it should be, and it has a lot of problems that other government agencies don't necessarily have, don't necessarily have, and it has to react to them, sometimes in a very quick manner, and the typical governmental approval processes can become a problem with that. So we say it is a business, and should be allowed to operate more as such, that's where we're coming from. The department, I mean, the, the department of, most other city departments don't really come under that range. There are some that do, but, but most don't.
Thanks, John. Adam?
So, we haven't taken a formal position on the transfer tax. We do view it as competitive with transfer taxes of other utilities. What's important about keeping it within the city is that DWP doesn't only service LA City. While we do have oversight over it, it could invest outside of the city borders, and this can go to programs that go towards cleaning our streets, and go towards local jobs. And so, for that reason, we, we do think it is an important revenue source.
Thanks. Thanks a lot. Okay, if I could get Margaret Peters, please, come on, I thought I saw you, and Clint, you're on deck, followed by Shirley Fuqua.
Good evening.
Or did she leave?
Since I only have a minute, I'm going to try to.
Go ahead, and if you need to speak again, you can fill out another card.
Okay. I, as a neighborhood council board member, went out and anecdotally just talked to people in my neighborhood about some of the proposals on this reform issue, and I think the one that stuck out the most was the one regarding civil service. In my neighborhood, we have a lot of current and retired city, federal, state, you know, employees who have come under that system. There's a proud tradition of city service in our community. And what the major thing was, that the city personnel would continue to have jurisdiction regarding testing and hiring, and DWP would be allotted more exempt positions. To increase the department's capacity to hire specialized personnel to either administrative or executive positions, civil service rules shall continue to apply, as long as DWP remains a city of Los Angeles governmental department.
Finish your thought.
Towards that end, the CAO shall maintain the responsibility of negotiating with labor on behalf of the city, to maintain consistency and parity, in terms of pay and benefits with other departments and city employees to the greatest extent possible. If they're going to be working for the city, then they're going to have parity.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Simmons?
Could I get a clarification before I start, I fill out two cards, so I.
Well, I'll get, if you filled out two, I'll get to it. But I want to make sure everyone that's filled out a card has afforded the opportunity before I give somebody a double dip.
Okay, all right, fine. My name is Clint Simmons, and I'm a member of Slink and some other organization within the community. My training as an engineer tells me that you're going by this thing the wrong way. We, first of all, by having a reform does not mean you're going to improve the product in any way at all. There should be a committee set up to first identify what DWP function is, what they do, and go through item by item, and list what it is. And then you have those individuals who say, this is not working properly, we should make a change. Then you come to the community and get their inputs. But what you're doing now, you're going by it backwards, and just based upon common sense, I don't see that's going to improve anything at all. There should be a committee formed first, and they go through and look at everything that DWP has, and then identify, identify their concerns, what can they do to make it better, and based upon that. Because at the rate you're going, all I've been hearing for the last six months, is they want to reform DWP, and I can assure you, just by having a reform for reform's sake, does not improve it.
Okay, and we agree with you on that, Mr. Simmons, but, but let me, let me say this. There have been several committees, one of which I formed myself, which was the 2020 Commission, which, so we're dealing, Mr. Fuentes, from several reports and recommendations of committees that were formed to review possible reforms of the Department of Water and Power. So I don't disagree, but I just want you to know that this is something that we did not do willy-nilly. A lot of the questions and the concerns were, were taken from actual reports.
Yes, but what I'm seeing.
So we're getting, no, we're not going back and forth. I'm going to call you on the second card. But I did want you to, to know that there have been committees formed to make recommendations to this council. Yes, ma'am, and you will be followed by, if Ms. Aubrey is still here, if not, Mr. Goodman, Damian? Yes?
My name is Shirley Fuqua. I am a proud retiree of Department of Water and Power.
Good for you.
And I have some historical memory that many of these people who have spoken before have, don't have. I worked in all of the power systems. PO and M, power operating maintenance, power design and construction. I worked as an auditor for the Department of Water and Power, but I run out of time before I tell you my resume. I then went to work for the airport as a consultant. I worked for the League of Women Voters. I worked for Hilton Hotels Corporation. I work now for the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council. And I'm, I just have so many ideas, and one of the things, the first thing I want to talk about is the civil service system. The historical memory is that DWP without historical memory, without their historical memory, would not understand the pitfalls that not having civil service would entail. There were widespread discriminatory practices before, and that all got kind of ironed out, and there've been, the Edison decree, I don't know whether any of you are familiar with it or not, because that's historical. And I probably need to come to your meeting next week, so.
If you fill out another card, if you're going to stick around, I'd like to hear what else you have to say.
I'll fill a card out, I'll fill out three of them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So if I, I don't see Eva Aubrey, so.
She left.
Mr. Goodman, and you'll be followed by David Jackson and Theodore Thomas. Yes, sir?
Good evening, councilmembers. It's always great to see you in the district, holding these important conversations. But forgive me if I feel a bit weary when elected officials of an agency so corrupt, it's on the famous Hollywood term, forget it, Jake, it's Chinatown proposes reform. And then the other question is, why is there a rush? Anytime I look at reform measures, I always, especially those that are proposed by elected officials, I look at the money. I look at the 8% transfer fee, which comes up to well over a quarter of a billion dollars just this year alone. And then I'm reminded of the Act versus the City of Los Angeles lawsuit, that says that that's pretty illegal, and you probably owe us back 1.5 billion dollars in taxes. So, now we're talking about a potential reform measure as part of these other things, that may be good, maybe not, but we reduced that transfer fee from 8% to 6%. Fact is, if you go from stealing $10,000 from me every year, to $5,000 from me every year, doesn't make the Act any less illegal. So I would suggest another proposal, that, another Hollywood quote, that we leave the gun and take the cannoli. Let's, bring us back our 1.5 billion dollars, the ratepayers have overpaid you, and then talk about these other reform measures. Thank you.
Okay. So, if I can get Brother Jackson and Theodore Thomas, followed by Leonard? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Councilman Wesson, Councilman Dawson. I'm a City of Los Angeles resident. I'm also a senior construction inspector for the Department of Airports, and the Materials Control Coordinator there. I've been with the city for 29 years. I am also a DWP ratepayer. Infrastructure is a national problem. Repairs and modernization need to be addressed on a national level. Stabilizing the board and elimination of political-tiered, politically tied board members, yes, that does need to be addressed. Reduction of red tape and contracting, that can be problematic. Governance must remain in the city's hands. Removing civil service controls and hiring is a gross mistake. This is, that's a race to the bottom. And whether these gentlemen, who represent private interests, have a concern for that, I doubt it. It's profit-driven. Their concerns typically are profit-driven. I know I'm going to run out of time, but I will close with this. This will result in poor work quality, low to no training of employees, profit-driven decisions. Consulting services will focus more on poor design and unnecessary layers of private administration cost. Privatization means high executive salaries and low employee wages.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, come forward. Yes, sir, good to see you again.
Okay. Councilman Wesson and Dawson, my, my concern is, we've been here listening all day, and none of the stakeholders, you never talk about stakeholders. I think we should have the stakeholders, I mean, just for the stakeholders, that's the residents of the area that really pay the, the majority of the bill. And civil service should never be taken out. As far as I'm concerned, DWP needs some control over them, because the way they go up on their money, you can't keep up with them. And I just think that the city should be more, more concerned on the stakeholders than, really, I understand the business, but the business, that's all they're talking about, what's going to help the business and everything. Nobody sit up here and talk about the, the actual devastation that it will have on the business, on the stakeholders. And I'm a stakeholder, and no one asks me about my bill going up. I know Armin said, once a month, I really like every two months. That helped me out on my budget.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. And, and really, the purpose of us being here tonight with you. And really, the purpose of us being here tonight with you is to hear from you. So we do want to hear your opinions. We do want to hear your recommendations. We do want to hear your thoughts, because none of this is written in stone. This is the document that was generated, was a document that was generated to create or spark this kind of a conversation, and we want to get your feelings. So with that said, sir, the floor is yours.
First of all, good afternoon, good evening, Councilman President Wesson and my city councilman, Harris Dawson. I'm here on behalf of the neighborhood council. I'm a neighborhood council board member. And the message that I get from, you know, the community that pretty much I represent, which is South Los Angeles, our residents really don't have a lot of positive words for the DWP, but I am here in the spirit of the reform. But if we're going to talk about reform, DWP, we need to make sure that we bring the people in the community, or DWP need to get out, go door-to-door into the community, and talk to the people in the community and how you can sort of make the system a little bit better. Because you can't leave the people out in the community, not in South Los Angeles. So in South Los Angeles, our residents are saying, "We like DWP, but we don't like the rate hikes. We like DWP, but DWP, you need to come out into the community, send your representatives out, knock on some doors, and explain all what you're trying to do to the residents. Don't leave the community out of it, DWP."
Thank you. Okay, so who else? Did everybody come up that I just called? So I need Mac, Mac Shorty, Michael, is it Mike Chatten? Pastor Willie Green, come on down. General Jeff. And identify yourself.
Mac Shorty out of Watts, California. Tired of that brown water, that dirty water. Commissioner Fonderbrook is the only one been man enough to come down there to Watts. DWP pumped the water, left my street black in front of my home. We want equity metrics in DWP. We want to see people of color, poor people with jobs. I'm tired of hearing about a union who takes money, and the city don't hold them accountable. If I stole something, you would prosecute me to the fullest extent of the law. Somebody stole from the citizens of Los Angeles. We're demanding that the city prosecute to the fullest of the law. They broke the law. It's nice and dandy that they have good programs, but you still broke the law. You left a dishonest taste in the citizen of Los Angeles' mouth, and we sick and tired of DWP, and we want them reformed right now.
Thank you, sir. If I could get the next speaker, please come and identify yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Wesson, and to Mr. Marcus, Marquise Dawson, Harris, and all of the you who have come out today, along with my associate here. We echo some issues in the City of Watts. My name is Mike Chatham. I represent the community. And our concern is that three things could end environmental racism, in particularly Watts. In harm with the elected officials in local state agencies that are accountable to the Watts community by ensuring clean air, clean land, and water. These same officials and agencies have an obligation to communicate and engage residents of Watts by bringing people out and understanding the environmental context and potential health risks of what they work, live, study, play, and worship by. The honorable equitable development in Watts must focus on the needs of the current residents. Any investment in the community and all new developments shall cause zero displacement of the existing community, and instead contribute to the need for affordable housing, jobs, growth, clean, green places, and community health assets. So ultimately, we are informed, but we are disappointed by some of the things that's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we, so again, if I could get Pastor Willie Green and General Jeff and Charlotte Butler. Yes, go ahead.
I thought I should have come dressed up, but then I thought, you know what? Just come like I am. I just came from work, working really hard.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. Working really hard, and it's like, I just want to say we're poor. That's all. We're really hurting. You know, my bill's like always 400, 300. As a Christian, I believe in paying it down. I get it down, I pay it to zero, it's back up there again. I understand it basically should be like 150 every month, so maybe 300, but it's four and five. There was something wrong with the sidewalk out there where they couldn't read it, and I had to pay for that. And I'm always telling the ladies at the window, "This is unfair, it's a ripoff," so, in a nice way, because I respect you guys, I want to say it's a ripoff, you know? And I don't want to be as strict as they were, but I was, I'm with them on what they said. Just please, they're also flushing out our pipes right now as we speak. Are we going to have to pay for that? You know, the DWP, they said they're going to flush out the pipes. So are we going to have to pay for that? It's just too much. We can't handle it. It's too much money.
Thank you. And before, General, before you speak, I want to ask the folk up here on the, at the table, do you have any other questions for the business folk? If not, I will release them if they choose to go. Okay, Brett?
I...
And General, we get right with you.
I do wonder about the language that we use about shareholders and corporateness of DWP and how that combats what we're saying with social goals. That, to me, seems entirely consistent on their end, but it contradicts exactly what we're trying to do as a city. We have social goals. It is not a corporation. So they're being consistent. If you don't agree with that, let's be consistent, our end, that's us.
Thank you. Okay. So anyway, you guys are on your own. Oh, wait, Mr. Harris Dawson. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to interject, because a few people brought up the situation in Watts with cloudy water. On June 24th, DWP will be back to city council to give a report back on what's happened. So I'd appreciate it if folks would get with our team. Bernard Dory is over here, so if there's any charges, if the work, you know, if the work wasn't left in a satisfactory way, let us know, because those are questions that we'll put to DWP on June 24th in the regular city hall, city council session.
Thank you. And, General, welcome to the community where I live, and it's always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners Wesson, Harris Dawson, and Fuentes. My name is General Jeff. I am a Skid Row community activist, but I'm also born and raised in South Central Los Angeles, a product of Crenshaw High School. If I could just chime in on some, a little bit of this, because in Skid Row, our rates are actually protected from the affordable housing situation, but my family still owns property in this area. So in regards to DWP, five commissioners, I think that should be expanded to nine to include diversity. I agree with Councilmember Harris Dawson that to look at DWP as a business model is inaccurate. I think that is a service necessity that just happens to generate income, which is a little different outlook. And also, when it comes to DWP, I think that some of their overhead can be cut down by them outsourcing some of their street pole work to BSL, Bureau of Street Lighting, which is also a city agency, and therefore the savings could then be passed on to ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ms. Butler, please come forward, and followed by Jessica Goodheart. Yes?
I see my councilman, I see his face. Charlotte Butler here. And my concerns is with the DWP, and once again, DWP, a week ago was on the news, thanks to Tony Wilkinson right there, brought it to our attention that once again, they're clocking in and having lunch and drinking cocktails and running into, you know, being drunk and this and that. Also want to say that at the Crenshaw School, I brought up about a street, I mean, lights put into the alley, in our alleys, I questioned why was that? And now I question, was that a charge to me, even if it wasn't but a $2 increase in my bill? Also would like, I also would like to say that if the lights that were placed in the alleys are brighter than the lights that are in this room, and it's connected to the back of my property, you could see me better than you can see me in here. And I've asked that they do something about it, and they haven't done anything about it. And we, the stakeholders, should have been informed that they were going to be put in our space, and I'd still like to know what that's representing as far as money-wise.
Thank you. Okay, so if we could have Ms. Jessica Goodheart, and then what we're going to do, we're going to kind of begin our recycling process. So, Ms. Goodheart?
Good evening, council members, committee members. My name is Jessica Goodheart. I'm with the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, and we have been advocating for several years that the LA Department of Water and Power invest in energy efficiency programs and solar programs that serve South Los Angeles and other underserved communities. And we're really proud to see the department step up with regard to energy efficiency and look forward soon to a rollout of a community solar program that's going to address the great inequities in solar in the city. I just wanted to speak in support of the reform conversation that we're having today, but not so that DWP will become more like a profit-driven business, rather that, so that it will more effectively serve its public. Effectively serving its public means that it provides affordable, reliable power to...
Finish. Finish your thought.
Okay. Well, just really quickly, that, you know, and it needs to do that as a, as a public utility. And just a reminder of the history that this utility became public 100 years ago because the private utilities were, in fact, gouging the people of LA. But we face new challenges, and the current structure is not up to those challenges, particularly the hiring functions, which...
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. You were rolling, though.
I know, I just...
You were rolling. If you want, you can fill out another card if you like. And just let me say this. This is, I think, Mr. Harris Dawson and Deputy Mayor, you've been with us all of the time. This is one of the most spirited community meetings, committee hearings that we've had. And this is, this was our desire all along. We want you to speak your mind and speak it with passion, and I'd have to say that coming here to my part of town and Marquise Harris Dawson's part of town, that we have it going on, and I'm darn proud. This is a very, very...
There's no pictures on the card.
This is very good conversation, and no pictures on the card. That's for sure. Okay, so we're going to begin our recycling process. With that said, I'm going to call Mr. Simmons, and then Kent, you'll come up after Clint.
Yes, sir. Clint Simmons, I'm with Slink and some of the other community organizations. The committee that I spoke about earlier, you had indicated you guys have a committee, but all I've been hearing the committee doing is talking about transferring funds. The City of Los Angeles, we have a sewer system that is over 100 years old, and it need repairing completely. But the city council continually to approve development that is too much for our infrastructure to handle. An example, building skyscrapers in a flood control zone, which makes it completely difficult. That is why I would like to see a committee formed so that they can go through each item that the DWP is responsible for, and then, in that process, you can have concerns, then come back to the public and say, "This is what we are recommending that the DWP do to change." I'm more concerned about the function of the DWP, not about how money and stuff be transferred. Because if we have another flood like we had in 1938, when Congress designated the Army Corps of Engineers to come into Los Angeles and set up what we call a watershed, and now with all the development, that is just about wiped out, and if we have a half an inch of rain to last for about 10 hours, God knows what will happen. We can look at the City of Houston and some of the other cities now, where we're having rainfall. So I would say, if we need some reform, it should be the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Okay, so if I could get Kent, and then, is Ms. Fuqua still here? I thought I saw her. Yeah, okay, I see her. So you're up next, and then Ms. Peters. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. President, for asking all of us in Viro's to address you next Friday, but, you know, I actually like being in the room with the business people. I agree with Brennan Norton that democratic process is important to the functioning of a public business like DWP, and I disagree that it should be modeled on an IOU like SoCal Edison. SoCal Edison created a business disaster at San Onofre, but public input has actually benefited LA DWP. And Mr. Waldman suggests policy like getting off coal prevents DWP from delivering a product efficiently. I suggest the opposite. The large majorities of Angelenos pushing to get us off coal were echoed by the PA report back in 2010 that showed coal's cost rising 65%. And now that quitting coal is a state mandated, slowing down the transition off coal would be hugely costly. I believe this has been confirmed by the ratepayer advocate in a report last year. The public doesn't like high rates either, but I say, keep the democracy in the process, because it's actually good for business. Thank you.
No, thank you, sir. Ms. Fuqua, please come to the mic.
Thank you. So to continue, I think the civil...
Pull it down. Pull it down.
I think the civil service system should stay in place because, as I said, historical discrimination within Department of Water and Power. When I first started working there, I saw it, and it continued until civil service started putting clamps down. On the rate, on the transfer of funds, I agree with transferring some of the funds. I have no problem with that, but I think that some of those funds ought to go toward lowering, taking away the sewer and sanitation charges from the DWP bills. My bill, I heard people quote the prices on their bills, mine is about $700 every two months, and, yeah, it's very high. And I was an energy auditor, so I happen to know how to conserve electricity and water. I'd like to have the time and address for the meeting next Friday.
Thank you. Okay, after Ms. Peters, if I could get Leonard? Leonard, come back.
Just to continue, in terms of questions that were raised about the particular proposals, the contracting and procurement policies would be modified to allow the DWP more flexibility. What kind of modifications are we talking about? We talking $2 million contracts won't need approval, $5 million contract, dollar contracts won't need, city council approval, city attorney review? What kind of modifications are we talking about in that area? Second question, would these charter changes that are being proposed apply to all city departments, or is this proposal DWP-specific? I know other proprietary departments, harbor, airports, they would probably want to have some type of say in terms of reform as well. And final question, if there is some kind of modification with civil service, what protections against hiring abuses would be put in place by this, you know, by the hiring department at DWP to, you know, prevent abuses, nepotism, patronage, all these things? You know, these are just some of the questions that were asked in regards to the proposal.
You've asked some great questions, and basically, and then I'll ask Mr. Harris Dawson to speak as well. We are doing a series of hearings, and we are getting input from the community. Then, after we finish with these hearings, the committee will meet, and then we'll try to fashion a package of recommendations. So all of the concerns that you and others have raised, we would try to factor that in in the package that we present to the full council. And when we present this to the full council, there will be another opportunity for the community to participate. That's something that Mr. Fuentes is committed to, and something that this committee is committed to. But thank you so much, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the folks who have raised the issue of how employment may or may not be restructured in the reform. I think it's just, it's no surprise to me that it's coming out a lot in this hearing. The Eighth District, Eighth Council District has, next to actually District Seven, Mr. Fuentes, one of the highest numbers of DWP workers as residents in it, and so, you know, perhaps in one of our subsequent hearings, we can fold in a discussion of, if not the formal, their bargaining unit... formal, their bargaining units, just put out a call to, to people who are retirees or workers at, at, at DWP, to see what they have to say about the matter, because I think it's very, very important. And Ben, DWP's been an important, among the most important employer in key parts of our city.
True, true, without a doubt. So, if I could get Leonard, followed by Mac Shorty? Yes, sir.
Yes, I would want to continue with my, my conversation with the, the DWP.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'm honored actually even to be here to even hear these types of conversations about reform, and I think reform is a good thing, but it's depending on what type of reforms you have. So, to the DWP again, if you're considering reform, consider reforming, lowering, or trying to find alternative ways to lower the ratepayers' tax water bills, because a lot of time, I heard a gentleman in this, this chambers here, or this auditorium say that, you know, he pays his bills, you know, all the time, but the rates just keep going up. We save water, we do all the types of things to try to put all these energy-efficient products in our homes, but the rates are still going up. So, I challenged the DWP today, and I hope the news and everybody else in this room can hear this, DWP, will you come out into our communities and knock on some doors, and start explaining to the people directly, instead of being up under the umbrella of the City Council, and, you know, Deputy Mayor, and our own, you know, the South Los Angeles Alliance Neighborhood Council? Would you come out into our community in the South Los Angeles, in the Eighth District, knock on some doors, bring your staff, bring your boots, and, and explain to the ratepayers what you're doing? Get them involved into the process, because it's very important to have the people in the community that you charge involved in the process, not just coming into the room, not just sending the DWP bill out to their homes. Knock on doors, get involved.
Thank you. So, if I could get, is it Mac Shorty? Yes, sir.
I'm no way mad at DWP, let's get that straight. We need y'all, we need the water. I'm not going to lie about it. I buy a lot of, if it wasn't food for less selling, water, ten, three cases for $10? You know, don't get me wrong. But, honestly, I mean, Watts, we want solar power, you know, we want to be as informed as the people on the West Side, the North Side, San Pedro, we want the same benefits. That's all we asking, you know, and we just want our fair share, metric, atrix, you know, we want to thank the Commissioner for coming out to Watts, you know, he came to the Watts Coffee House, sit down, he heard us out, and, you know, we just asked it for DWP to do it. It's not hard, we're not violent people, we're not those people 65 or 50 years ago. We're young, we're smart, we're intelligent, and we got money! And we don't mind paying our bills. Well, you might have to buy some bottled water on the way to Watts.
Thank you. So, Robin Cole, for the first time, welcome.
I'm Robin Cole, Park Mesa Heights Neighborhood Council Secretary, and, but I'm representing myself as a stakeholder, and I'm going to tell you, I'm not comprehending what's going on here today. All I know is that my water bill, not as high as everyone else's, $35. My electric bill, $155. My sanitation bill, $100. So, this is not all about water. This is just another way to increase the bill overall. Now, I'm, what I'm getting here is that DWP and the City of LA, they're having issues as to how they're going to get this money. You need five years' increase from the stakeholders. And so, whatever's going on internally within the departments, I hope you all figure it out. But, right now, the stakeholders should not have to pay for pipelines. Like the man said, there's a lot of structure going on in the city, okay, and how is it going to sustain? And so, you know, it's, we've already been had, that's what I feel. Because trash costs more than water.
Thank you. Okay, so, I'm going to call on Ms. Fuqua for the last time, and we're going to close public comment. I'm going to see if there are any statements.
Well, basically.
Wait, wait, I got, I got another, so I think I'm going to close with you, General Jeff, and I got a card from Mr. Chatten as well, and then, okay. And no, what I was going to do, I want to make sure the people at the desk are afforded an opportunity to, to wrap it up and say what they want to say. So.
I, I fully understand what the reform is about, and that we need it, but I also think it needs to have a lot of reason applied to it, and sometimes, some of the things I'm hearing are not reasonable. And, as, as you've heard of people complaining about the amount of their bills, and I remember when they first started the sanitation taxes on, on our bills, they were supposed to be $2 for maybe two years. And then, with, and it wasn't signed, and it wasn't agreed upon to stop it in two years. So, it just kept escalating and escalating and escalating, but people don't know this because they weren't working there and they didn't hear about it. Thank you very much, and please give me the address of the meeting so that I can come next week.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. It'll be at City Hall next Friday at 8:30. Don't know what room. It'll be in the council chambers, so it would be on the third floor, the council chambers at 8:30 AM. Mr. Wilkinson.
Thank you.
We got a good one going on tonight, this ought to make you pleased. Yeah, this is the kind of, so I told you what was going to happen when we came to my side of town. All right, General Jeff, followed by Mr. Chatten, I'm excited about this group. Come on. General.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also thank Deputy Mayor Romero, Slank, and the rest of the panels for actually having this wonderful, informative discussion. I want to piggyback, first, I want to note to say, on my speaker card, you said there were no pictures, so I actually drew you a picture on behalf of the community.
Oh, you drew a heart, that's okay.
We, we got love for you, Herb.
That's okay.
We got love for you, Herb, keep up the good work.
That's okay.
That said, earlier, my brother Damien Goodman raised a couple of important issues that are dire, direly important to this community, and I don't think that they should be glossed over, you know, real easily. I'm very concerned about that, it's the first I'm hearing of this, and if the community is actually owed some monies, I think that the city needs to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Chatten? Oh, there he is. Come on down.
Yes, sir. Back to the panel again. What we do have a problem with, my name is Mike Chatham, community, okay, is that Mr. Bischiano is not here. And unfortunately, we've been trying to find him. And unfortunately, these issues that we have in Watts should be handled by these officials, and that's what I talked about, as well as what we put him on notice on the Fourth of December over in Diamond Bar, where we talked about these air issues and the landmass issues and all that. I begged him to come forward and have a town hall meeting like this in Watts, because there's so many people that don't know. They don't know. And we have a mass of people, we have almost 46,000 in a two-and-a-half-mile area that needs to know. So, we need to bring the DWP and the elected officials in Watts and tell them what's going on. All right? So, I'm going to get him, and I hope you tell your colleague that I'm looking for him, all right? Good evening.
Your, your message will be delivered. I want to say this before you all leave, and then I'm going to ask the people up at the table to kind of say a few things if they choose to. Again, really appreciate you coming out, and I know I joked a little, but this has been a very, very substantive conversation. It has been the kind of conversation that I knew that we would have in the community that I'm proud, and Mr. Harris Dawson is proud to represent, so I want to thank each and every one of you. What you need to know, though, a lot of the staff that you see here today, could the staff raise their hands? Staff, staff, raise their hands, I have staff. They're not getting paid for this. Usually, we have a hearing, it's in the, you know, between 9:00 and 5:00. I made a request that they, they come out in the evening with us a minimum of three times, and they did it, they did it without whining, they did it without complaining, and they did a good job. So, I want you to give them another round of applause, because they, they don't get So, Mr. Harris Dawson, you have a parting, a parting shot.
I, I just want to thank everybody who's been a part of the process. This is a, a very rich, and I think exemplary practice of democracy, especially on such a, such a complicated and consequential issue. So, thank you to everybody, and just ask everybody to excuse me on my way out. Today is Miles Davis's birthday, and if you don't come to ta, this part of town a lot, at the Balden Hills Crenshaw Mall, two Grammy Award-winning, winning jazz artists are having a, a free birthday show, Terrace Martin and Robert Glasper, so, I got to get out of here.
Oh, we got, and we, then we have to let you go. That's what you call keeping it real, all right? Joy, thanks again, Marquis, he's been at every meeting and participated. Thank you. Did, you guys want to say something?
I did. As a neighborhood council member, gathering information to take back to the community, and hopefully create a community, a community impact statement regarding this issue, the information I've gathered tonight, I understand how the business community benefits from this, and I also have an understanding from a previous meeting where DWP's GM graced us with her presence, was able to give personal stories regarding how the limitations of the charter affect her in doing her business, or limitations in civil service. But I think most of our stakeholders want to know, will a more nimble, more autonomous DWP lower my bill? And I don't think we've been provided that information. I don't know that we have enough information to promote this measure or no. So, those of us that were not brought up in the city are not as familiar with civil service benefits or limitations. We can all read the charter. I get most of my information from those people in South LA that work for civil service, but I'm an AT&amp;T retiree that basically had a union protection. So, this is not, you know, foreign to me in terms of what DWP wants to do, but it's about the stakeholders, and I just don't feel like I have enough information yet to make a decision.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. We're doing the, the best that we can, and I do appreciate your participation, and maybe we can try to answer some of those questions. Would Deputy Mayor Romero?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say thank you for continuing this public conversation on DWP reform. I think today we heard loud and clear how all these complex issues come down to some simple things about how do we, how do we keep competitive rates, because it, you know, for all of us? And I think some of the things that we're trying to do with DWP reform is just that, how do we allow the general manager in the department to really, you know, give her some authority over routine contracting and operations so that we do save money for the ratepayers? So, when we're talking about efficiencies and more effectiveness, it's really about operating, saving dollars for the ratepayers. And I think we, you know, we, a lot of times, we've taken for granted how much oversight has been put to DWP, that we're trying to figure out those mechanisms to improve that. But ultimately, I think it's really about how do we make the hiring practices easier for the department to be more nimble and to provide better customer service? And that means, how do we get more jobs on the street? And I think, not only at the top levels, at the middle levels, but at the entry level, like we heard from the woman who spoke, is we need to get more people from our neighborhoods into a good-paying job at the Department of Water and Power, who ultimately is, is an asset, as Councilman Pres, Councilmember Fuentes has described, that, you know, why it's, it's different from some of our, our other proprietaries, is it provides, it's an asset, but it also provides services to, to the residents of the City of Los Angeles. So, we need to ensure that we protect that, and we make every effort to improve its efficiency for the City of Los Angeles. So, thank you again, Council President, for continuing this very, very rich dialogue.
My pleasure. Commissioner, did you want a, a word?
Well, we'll make it just one word, and since I don't have a teleprompter, I won't be able to make any mistakes. I, I want to thank everybody from the bottom of my heart, I'm not, my family's not new to Watts, and from Mr. Reverend McShorty, to Mr. Chatham, to Joy Enix, to Margaret Peters, the people in Slank, Council President, and your leadership, and Councilmember Harris Dawson's leadership, and the mayor's leadership through Deputy Mayor Romero here. We, I, I'm happy to see that people are participating, I want to see people more engaged. I push for more outreach, and we will continue to push for more outreach so that everybody, not just the neighborhood councils, but the community-based organizations, the churches, the mosques, the synagogues, everybody is engaged, because we are your DWP. You own us, and we do not, we're not a private company. We shouldn't be run, we should not be run for profit. We are a public utility, and we can't discriminate on basis of price and service. If there's discrimination in price and service, then we as commissioners have to do something about it. So, I'm, that has nothing to do really with reform, other than just speaking to the mission that we have as commissioners, and the passion that we, and time that we try to bring to the table to get this place reformed and do our part. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, for coming. Dr. Pickle? Did you want to say something?
As this moves forward, there have been reports on this process by the CLA and CAO. There's going to be another report by the CLA, CAO, and Office of Public Accountability, talking about in greater detail how to strengthen the Office of Public Accountability. We're continuing to support you. If questions come up from any of you, address it to our office or to the committee.
Well, thank you, sir, and I will see you next week. Mr. Fuentes, did you want to close, or? So, look, again, I want to thank you for coming, each and every one of you, my colleague, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Clerk, there's no further business before this committee, this committee is adjourned.